All right, thank you all for that conversation. Let's move on. This voucher is a key thing. Tim and Vivian.
Well, it would be easier to start with the DDA done so far more than the downtown plan because a lot of the city master plans kind of take this back off of what the DDA is.
Sure.
Downtown plan.
I'm actually going to talk about a little more than just the downtown plan because I think it's kind of important to look at everything, all the plans that have led up through this. And I apologize, I only have like 10 of these, but I can email out more, but take one. Well, I guess that's true. We are in a city building with copy machines. See, I have no office, so I don't even think about copy machines. I just, I'm sitting there burning off my computer at home.
We're not bound to any specific geography.
Everything that today was made from the same tree, so taking care of that sidewalk will be.
You have the city tree.
That's an elaborate way of speaking in the conversation.
I try. So I wanted to talk a little bit more than, about a little bit more than just the downtown master plan because I do think that we have an opportunity going forward to really partner to make this Berkeley kind of the coolest place ever. I mean, really the place to be. I've been here for two years now, almost. My contract is actually up at the end of next month. I assume I'll be back in June or April, but who knows, right? My sense has been over the past two years that while the city definitely supports the DDA, the DDA is kind of seen as off on its own, doing its own thing, and that the city doesn't necessarily see its commercial, historic commercial districts as a key priority because there is a DDA that oversees them. And what I want to kind of lay out is that we have so much opportunity, but this opportunity is only going to happen if we really work hand in hand as full partners. And if you guys are aware of everything that we're doing and understanding how strategically it can tie into what you're thinking about for the next five, 10 years. So it's more than me just talking about what's happening with the downtown master plan, which is great, but it's like all the little things about why this commercial district should be a priority. I mean, if you think about the stool, let me back up because outside of Michigan where there aren't DDA's, downtowns are huge assets for cities and they're seen as a key component of a city's success. And while we don't have a traditional downtown, we still have these fabulous little shopping districts and we have these two central corridors, which is why I love this quote, "The street is the river of life of the city," where, you know, the place where we come together because we have these two commercial corridors that intersect right at the center of our So I would like to really think about how do we partner, how do we make sure that we're looking at these two commercial districts for the assets that they are to the city so that perhaps when you think of it as a four-legged stool, you have the schools, you have parks and rec, you have residents, and you have the commercial district. And if that commercial district isn't being given the same sense of priority as those other three kind of stool legs, it's lopsided and it's going to fall over and it's going to affect the long-term sustainability and success of Berkeley. You know, when you come, everybody comes into Berkeley, they come in on our main corridors. The stronger those corridors are, the better they look, the more active they are, the more pedestrian-friendly, the more walkable, the better we're going to be in the long run. So that's my little spiel to begin with. And I just wanted to go through, you know, the plans and the planning process that we've done to date. So when I started back in February of 2017, we actually did a strategic planning session for the DDA and we had a joint session with the council. It was a Friday night session because we wanted to make sure that we had council's input on that, came up with a strategic plan. It's out on the DDA's website. It talked about, you know, moving forward in a Main Street, a four-point approach. It's a great, solid plan. We're going to be updating that master plan or that DDA strategic plan as part of the master plan process next spring. And one of the things I want you to think about now is making sure that you guys look at joining in that joint session that we'll have again and making sure that that's a priority for council staff members to be at. So that is kind of, you know, that was kind of our first step of creating for the organization itself, where do we want to go and what do we want to be. Then, you know, we worked on wayfinding. It had been in the process. I know it had been, you know, going back and forth. Jack brought in Corbin. You know, I think we've come up with a great plan. We've got, we know exactly where we want our wayfinding signs. We know what the cost is going to be. We know what they're going to look like. You know, next steps, DDA plans to put some funding in its next fiscal year budget so that we can start implementing, putting the signage, phasing it in, into the commercial district. But at the same time, I think the city needs to be thinking of that too. And where do, you know, how do we roll this stuff off together so it's not disjointed? And, you know, how do we work together? It can't just be the DDA saying, "Okay, we're going to put $80,000 in a club on here." We need to be working with you guys to make sure that we're thinking comprehensively. So once again, I think, you know, budgeting those funds to begin implementing is something the council and staff, city staff, needs to be thinking about. The downtown market analysis we completed in February of 2018, you know, that was a comprehensive retail strategy for our commercial districts. We recently completed a downtown, a branded downtown Berkeley retail recruitment brochure that is out now in the hands of some commercial leasing agents as well as the retail recruitment specialists that we're working with from Oakland County. You know, current actions, like I said, you know, we are actively recruiting. We've got some pretty fabulous businesses that are looking to come in to Berkeley that could be, I mean, just huge game changers for our commercial district, but that fit within who we want to be. So next steps, you know, we have to be really thoughtful. And this is, once again, things that the council has to start to think about. It has to be more than just what we're talking about at the DDA level. You know, do we put a restriction on national chains and formula stores to protect this precious niche that we have? You know, what makes us special is the fact that we have so much specialty retail. You guys know that we have over 55 specialty retail shops in this mile and three quarters. That's almost unheard of. We need to nurture that. How do we protect that? Because as we become more successful, you know, you're going to get pressures. We're going to get it. We're going to become like Farnell. Do we want the Buffalo Wild Wings? No. But you know what? Those pressures are going to be there. So what do we do to protect this special, special district? These are things that you guys have to be thinking about as much as we are at the DDA. You know, when, I don't know, well, only a couple of you made it to the public input session, but on Tuesday night, and I don't know if any of you made it to the field office on Wednesday, but one of the things that, that one of the economic development sheets showed is that our biggest segment of is health and fitness. It's crazy. I mean, and yet that generates one of the lowest amounts of dollars for the city. So do we start thinking, okay, what do we do? How do we, do we limit more, you know, health and fitness? Or do we start to think about, do we require that they, anybody who wants to come in now has to have 20 to 25% of their floor space in retail? We have to start to think creatively about this stuff. We have to. Anyway, those are things. How can you guys help, you know, help us support creative strategies? Give, you know, come up with ideas, you know, if they're crazy strategies, at least be open-minded to them. This is such an asset, you guys. We have got to protect this because if we don't protect what we've got here, we become generic and we lose what makes us special. We did the design guidelines in 2018, the comprehensive set of design standards. I think those are incredibly necessary. I think that you can look at development over the past 20 years and clearly see that there was really no design aesthetic that was being enforced. In progress, we're creating the design overlay district, similar to historic district. You know, it's just an overlay district. We're creating that design review board that will enhance the quality and compatibility of development based on those design guidelines. How can you guys help? I think you need to really encourage all new planning commissioners to understand the basic precepts of planning. And to be honest with you, they don't right now. I mean, the fact that some of them don't understand an overlay district is disheartening. I mean, this isn't something that is some crazy planning concept. This is planning 101. So somehow we need to make sure that, that we are educating those community members that are being assigned boards so they can effectively do their jobs and keep progress moving forward and not get weighed down. The highway, the road diet is ongoing, obviously. You guys know that. We completed that TIA traffic analysis. The DDA did two public input sessions. We had 70 people participate in those, either by coming in in person or doing an online survey. The city is doing the next, its public input session on November 28th. Council will consider that resolution as support on the 3rd. You know, I think you guys need to make sure that you're there at that public input session. I think there were only a handful who showed up for the DDA's input sessions. It's really important for you guys to be at these input sessions at the DDA or DDA-related projects and make sure that your voice is heard. The master plan parking study update, so that's what you guys really wanted to hear. Everything that we've done has led to this. We just recently, so this, our downtown master plan parking study update is there to provide strategies and recommendations that will inform local decision-making on critical downtown planning issues and advance our Main Street revitalization agenda. The fact that we're a Main Street community now, I think, gives extra weight to what we're trying to accomplish in the DDA district. I think if DDA's were to disappear in five years, you'd have a Main Street organization that would seamlessly continue the revitalization process on, and that would really force an even closer partnership, I think, because the city would be basically taking over a lot of those financial aspects that the DDA handles now. We recently completed the community speak-out session on the 13th. We had about 55 people attend. We will be putting that, an online survey up, so for those of you who didn't make it to that session, you need to make sure that you can give us some input through those online opportunities. Next steps, well, actually I should go through and just say, you know, what are we going to be actually looking at? Land use, examining existing, anticipating futures, opportunities. We're going to look at opportunity sites in more depth than we did with the design guidelines. We came up with a couple hypothetical sites, but as part of this plan, we're going to delve even deeper and say, "Look, here are critical opportunity sites that, you know, we need to think aggressively about developing and how they should be developed." Transportation, you know, we have a tendency to think of transportation as just cars. Think of transportation as cars, people, bikes. It's every way you move from one place to another. We have got to be thoughtful about this and we have got to look at how we make our streets places and not just pass-throughs. And, you know, we're working on that with Coolidge. If this road diet goes through, it's going to transform that street. It's going to make this a Berkeley street, not just a regional pass-through street. It's going to transform what's going to, that whole corridor is going to, it's going to act as a catalyst for development. I mean, this is a critical thing. We need to be thinking about on 12 Mile, can we take it back from the county so we can control what happens there? We have got to start to slow traffic and not let cars rule. I realize we're in Detroit where cars rain, but you know what? Transportation's changing so quickly. We should be looking at transportation as a city. We should be looking at how our seniors are going to move around in five years. We should be looking at how, you know, not just Coolidge and 12 Mile, but how are we going to be transporting ourselves, period? You know? What is the nature of transportation? This will address, you know, some of that as well as, you know, kind of current, how it applies to current conditions as well as how it might apply to future. Parking, we're doing that parking study update, so we'll be looking at suggestive ratios, best practices, how do we make this public-private crazy parking stuff that we have? How do we address some of that? And then looking at underutilized areas as well. Place making and urban design, so public, our gathering spaces, crosswalks, lighting, landscaping, you know, how do we make our DDA district, our downtown, the city's two commercial, key commercial corridors look at this that they can look. They're going to be bringing us business development strategies, market strategies, where should we be concentrating our economic development efforts from a business development? They're going to look at the housing and mixed use development, build on some of that stuff that we started with the design guidelines. And then we're going to have an implementation piece so that this isn't just a plan, but this is a plan that gives us realistic actions, tells us who our partners are, where the funding sources are going to be and how we should start to phase this out. And we need you guys to partner with us on that too. You know, there's no way the DDA can do what needs to be done without, I mean, we have got to be thinking about this in partnership. This is so critical, so critical for the future of the city of Berkeley. Next steps, December, stakeholder interviews, workshop summaries completed. We'll get the final state of the downtown report presented. The task force review in January. We'll probably have another community visioning workshop based on some of these results that come back from the workshop summaries. February, hopefully we'll have the draft downtown plan and workshop summary. We'll do a task force review and in February is probably when we'll do that DDA strategic plan update, which is once again where we want you guys to participate in one of those sessions. March, they'll draft the second downtown plan and the updated DDA strategic plan. April, you'll see the third draft and hopefully the final. It will be presented to the DDA board and then in May, we'll do a joint presentation to city council and planning commission. How do you guys, how, what's your role, once again, to actively participate in all of those input and visioning sessions, whether they're in person or online? Hearing what you guys have to say is critical. You are the top. Nothing we do is going to get done if there isn't buy-in from the city council. We do, I do want to talk about the fact we have this multi-community planning process that's going on in tandem with Oak Park and Huntington Woods. The purpose is to assess, you know, transportation, bike, pedestrian, and sustainable infrastructure issues along the two shared corridors of Coolidge and 12 Mile, I mean, 11 Mile. Completed, we received a grant through Oak Park from SEMCOG for the planning process. Paul Diddy Decker has been hired to lead that process. Public input sessions will probably begin and they'll be held individually in all three communities in January of COVID. Mid and long term, we see this as an opportunity to work together, to go for TAP grant funds, significant TAP grant funds and foundation money to look at implementing some of the green infrastructure opportunities as well as in Berkeley itself, a major streetscape project along Coolidge, which is much necessary. This is a huge project. I do think that by working in a multi-community process that our, our ability to get foundation money and, and TAP grant funds is going to be significantly higher. I know we've got to be thinking alongside with DPW on what types of major infrastructure and utility or whatever things are happening along Coolidge. We've got to be thinking and working so closely, hand in hand, this whole way because this stuff is major. It's complicated. I mean, I know you know that. How can you guys, I think you can, once again, make sure you show up for the public input session. You know, talk to your, your, reach out to Huntington Woods and Oak Park, you know, whether it's city staff or fellow council members, to just talk about this process and make sure that we're building consensus. You know, when we applied for the TAP grant, the little SEMCOG grant money, which was like $18,000 or $20,000, Kevin from SEMCOG actually said, he goes, "You know, what you guys are doing here is unprecedented." He says, "I wish we had other communities that were working together like you guys are." I mean, this is special stuff. So reach out and make sure that we're building the consensus to make this stuff work. So anyway, then obviously you guys will be kicking off the comprehensive plan. I will say this, that the, our planners, Lakota Group, really recommended that the city might consider this. They're calling their update a comprehensive plan for two reasons. One is because it is comprehensive. You're looking at the entire city. And secondly, it might be less confusing to have a DDA master plan and then all of a sudden there's a city master plan. So how, you know, are we confusing this for people? So maybe we call the master plan update for the city what it really is, a comprehensive Anyway, you know, I put a little quote at the end that said, I mean, it just talks about where are we in the future? Millennials, they're looking for different kind of housings. The number of single-person households in the U.S. is going to continue to go up and up and up. You know, people want to live in walkable downtowns. We have to be thinking of how do we put some residential into our downtown so that we're... And the other thing is we have to be thinking of not just market-grade housing. We have to look at this community and make sure that when we invite people in to do developments or the developers come to us, that we're creating housing that fits every income level in our city, not just market rate. There's nothing about Berkeley that says screams market rate. We're a good, solid, we have everything. We're an entry-level community. You're a solid middle-class community and you've got higher end. So you have to be thinking about that stuff. But anyway, it's, I thought this was, you know, a great quote, that the suburbs that have gotten to understand how people are going to want to live, work, play, and move in the future are the ones that are going to succeed, you know? We have a chance to be the very, very coolest because we're just starting out. You know, we aren't referring to Elway's or Royal Oak's. We're kind of like a raw slate, an open slate. We're putting all of our pieces of the puzzle, the foundation, in place. Let's make sure that we, we are looking at every possible thing, like Dan said, that we're being as creative as can be. I have a sense that, that Berkeley has always just been kind of, when it comes to its commercial district, kind of settled. Okay, well, it is what it is. It's a border community. It's never going to be Flint or some old, old place. It will be cool. And we can't just settle. We have to always say, "Is this the very best?" We have to reach for the best because there is so much potential here. All right, that's nice of you.
Before we move on to Tim's section, the master plan and the comprehensive plan has made more sense in our conversation here. Any thoughts on what we just heard from Vivian? Anything we wanted, you know, I know we've got, we don't have enough time for Tim as well. Any personal comments, thoughts?
Sure. Well, thank you. And I certainly do agree with the thought. I want to comment on the way in which this is communicated and then maybe a point or two on what was actually... So I like the simplicity of this, the one-pager sort of, it's really cool. I like the update, that's here's what we've done, here's where we're at and how, how you can help. I thought this was, you've given us things that we can actually take action on, so I like that a lot. And to your point about the way Berkeley had looked at the downtown in the past and this inflection point that we find ourselves in is, I don't think we can overemphasize that as we think about the next couple of years. Because we have done the best we could all this time with the DDA. You know, we had great, and we continue to have great volunteers that come in and do what they can, and then they go about their busy lives and do things. We as a city haven't had the talent that this role brings to the, to the table to help us think differently. So our DNA isn't used to having a DDA as a vibrant component of the city. It's been there and it's been helpful and people like it, and there's stuff to do, but it hasn't been an active entity within. So it's we are trying to figure out how to embrace and rally and build upon this as well. So hopefully we're at that point now where the breadth of the thinking, the quality of the progress and the vision for, for the future here can be received and added into, into the mix as we move forward. So, you know, I wrote down all sorts of stuff about all this. There's just one other little FYI about, back to the point about transportation and vis a vis the auto industry. I just read the other day that Ford Motor Company bought one of those little scooter companies.
Yes.
And I don't mean like our Gen Z's that, I'm looking, looking at you, buddy. But, because this one, we've already got a Brooklyn City scooter club, so. So anyway, I'll, those little things, those little two-wheelie things that you stand on and tour around town, if you've been downtown, you see them everywhere. And so Ford understands that they cannot be an automotive company. They need to stay in the mobility game and how people get around is all sorts of fun ways, whether you're in a vehicle or on foot or pushing a stroller or riding in a wheelchair or on one of those crazy scooter things or, I prefer choice, of course, the Gen Z. We as a city need to comprehend that too, so, you know, as we think about what we do.
Just a quick comment. I agree with Vivian that we need to attend a lot of these meetings. Just ask, we need to design the city calendars early as possible because I missed the one Tuesday night because I had another conflict meeting. We need to get them out there so we can get our schedule up there because we've got a lot of meetings.
Well, and I think that's part of the problem is too, there's this kind of communication gap, you know? And it seems like stuff that we send doesn't always make it on the calendar. So, I mean, I do think that that's part of where we need to make things work better is that there is a communication. Things aren't always getting each other's, the other's.
One thing we did recently on that, and I hope you guys have seen this already, is we built a calendar for your Google, under Google, we built a calendar for you guys. So if you bring it up on your phone, you can actually see what's going on across the board, whether it's DDA, chamber, some of our, whether it's our committees, we're trying to put people's school stuff up there as well so that you can have that and track that as on your calendar as well. And so hopefully that's, that's helpful. It's new and we're building it out, but Stan's been very helpful in that and Jay's working to keep the stamp on it as well. So we're trying to solve these issues as well.
Not to sidetrack on that too far, but is that just for us or is that linked to the city's official calendar that the public can see?
They go, they're two separate things, right? They're two separate things right now.
Okay. So, yeah, maybe, again, maybe this is someone who can work with the communication or the citizen engagement committee about how to streamline the calendar thing, if that makes sense. Because, of course, we want to know what's going on, and maybe there's a way to have somebody like Jay not be the singular person in the driver's seat, but enable the department heads to, and that, to do what they need to do and have Jay or somebody like him provide oversight to make sure if something does spiral a lot of control or something like that.
And we did talk about that.
Yeah.
I mean, Matt and I had a meeting just yesterday about it, that this is, like you said, this is a new venture as far as, this is something that we have never done before.
Yep.
And that communication gap, I totally understand because I experience it on a day-to-day level. But I'm trying to close the gap. But it's one of those things where embracing it is going to take a little bit of time. I don't want to kind of, you know, I'll steal from, drink from the fire hose. Everybody kind of share that, so.
Yeah. And as we move forward with, you know, creating tools that equip this team with the capability that they need to be effective, I think it will all be better. But one step at a time.
I just want to commend you, Vivian, for not only all of your work, but your leadership and with the entire DDA. I think that you made a really good point. I think we're in a new moment. I think council really does need to join more with DDA so we can move forward together. It lends credence and things will happen. You know, we'll start seeing things happening more. It is exciting. It's an exciting time in Berkeley, not only for what's going on, but the potential for what comes next. You know, it's really a great time, I think, to be here and to be in the city, so thank you for that. I don't know, it's a very good presentation, I think, to Steve's point, it's all laid out really, really nicely. Thank you.
Official thoughts? I'll close this and then we'll move over to Tim's section. I do agree with, you know, what Steve said right at the beginning. Our, the city's relationship with the DDA for whatever reason has looked like more of a us and a them historically, at least over the past few years. And it can't be like that in the future because we obviously do need to work together, but it doesn't just look that way from that, from our perspective, it looks that way from the residents too. Residents, it's, you know, the DDA is trying to do this and either the city needs to, you know, say yes or no to it, or we need to be in a collaborative planning process the whole time so it doesn't pitch a party where the DDA is saying this and now what is the city going to decide? I mean, if that's the case, then we're not doing it right. There shouldn't be the DDA working, you know, on an island and then they have to, you know, see if council's going to support it, or say no, or send it back to them. We have to make sure that we're not working from that perspective. It's got to be a collaborative process from the start. So, you know, being able to attend planning meetings, it's important, but we're all busy and it's not easy to deal with those things. But that doesn't mean we still can't be engaged, we still can't be not, or we still can't see what's going on online, we still can't have conversations with the other members of the DDA and with residents. And these are some of the things that we are looking at as a city. City, the DDA, it's a we. What do you think about that? What's your, what's your, a couple of your thoughts, your comments? I think we need to make sure that we're working collaboratively and it is not a us and a them, city. Ken?
I just, one more thing. I get the sense sometimes that from a resident perspective, there's a misunderstanding of the DDA district, what that district is and why, like, the DDA is working on this, oh, but only for this piece on 12 Mile or this piece on Coolidge. And I think that, and I don't know how to get over that, but maybe, you know, DDA 101 or something, but I think that if we can do better at explaining the role of the DDA and this is the district where that is, the DDA is activated, this is what they look at. And because I've heard people say like, well, why isn't the city doing that, or why isn't the DDA doing that over here? And then I always have to speak to the district, the DDA district. So, I don't know, again, communicating more about role and geographics, but then, then how we work together. Maybe if the DDA starts something in that DDA district, how then the city can help it spill over into a bigger area, so.
The other perception is that DDA means businesses versus everybody else.
Correct.
And then you've got residents on one side, you've got businesses on the other side. We've talked about that in the, over the past number of years, that relates to zoning and a number of different issues. It doesn't need to be an adversarial relationship.
Oh, nor should it be.
One side loses, one side loses.
No, it shouldn't be. Right.
Exactly. It should not be. And I think we need to do a better job of just what you said, maybe it's, our DDA's been around for a while.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of residents who maybe have moved in, who aren't as familiar with why it started, or what it offers, why we did it initially, and having a little refresher course on why we did it, what the DDA allows us to do for a community building standpoint is important. All right, with that, we got to move on. Tim, we move over to you.
One thing about master plans, I've seen with almost all of them, they're, you spend a lot of time doing them. You spend both eighteen months, excuse me, you spend a lot of money, they look pretty, and then after three months, they're collecting the dust on a shelf. I think we have a unique opportunity here with downtown master plan. At, you know, around the same time that we'd be updating the master land use plan or we might do the comprehensive plan, it's kind of our roadmap to the future, it's going to position us, how we're going to do things over the next ten to twenty years. Ideally, at the end, once those documents are done, I'm hoping that's going to be our blueprint for overhauling our zoning ordinance. That way, we can kind of make it the law. The things that we've worked on with the design guidelines, the law of the land, it's going to shape the form of our community. So, I really think we're in a very unique spot with the master plan. I think what ideally the first step would be to establish kind of a steering committee. I think we need to have representatives from city council, from planning commission, DDA, DVA, I guess we include some others, those are the ones that come to mind. That way, we're getting those, you know, cross-commission efforts to collaborate on the master plan. And I think the first order of business for that committee would be to develop a scope of work. And we look heavily at what they're doing with the downtown plan. We don't want to have overlap or conflicting plans. We want the master plan and the downtown plan to be harmonious and complementary. So, I think we need to pay close attention to the scope of work. And I think with as robust of a plan as the downtown plan is going to be, we can have maybe a more narrow scope. There are statutory requirements for what you have to have in the plan. You have to have a land use plan and program. You have to have a section, you know, regarding your transportation systems and your infrastructure. You have to have recommendations for provided areas and recommendations for implementing any of the plan's proposals. So, I think with the robust downtown plan, it kind of gives us the opportunity to focus on, you know, some of the other areas that aren't good. If we look at Woodward or 11 Mile, we've talked a lot about the parking study with the downtown plan. The Woodward Business District comes to mind. I think the Mcdougal Garage case, if that thing plays out and goes to trial, even in our best-case scenario, if we win, there's still a parking problem on Woodward. So, I think a master plan gives us an opportunity to look at those corridors and think, what can we do to address some of these issues? So, ideally, I think for our steering committee, possibly two members from council, two members of planning commission, two members of the DDA board. You know, we need to get together and, you know, get a scope of work together. Beyond that, we put out a request for proposals. So far, I've been very impressed with the work the Lakota Group has done for the downtown plan. Particularly, they've had a very robust engagement portion of that. We've talked a lot with the planning commission, we've got the public participation plan going. So, I think with, whether you call it a master plan or a comprehensive plan, we need to have robust community engagement in terms of identifying, you know, what our residents want to see and do for. Once we've done the RFP, and I think we would solicit proposals, see if, well, Lakota Group as well, I mean, they have familiarity with the community and I think they would be in a position to help us with, you know, with a master plan, a comprehensive plan that's not going to be contradictory with what the downtown plan is trying to accomplish. Steering committee would then review the responses to the RFP and then narrow it down for, you know, maybe two or three firms to interview. Beyond that, they would make a recommendation to city council as to who will award the contract Once the contract is awarded, I think you'd be looking at a similar path. You have the consult to robust engagement, you know, have various sessions, bring, like, from residents, from community stakeholders. Then they'd be in a position to draft a plan and then come back for review, final planning, and adoption. But really, our scope of work is very important and I guess, was anybody, when the last time the master plan was done, 2007, or any of the current council numbers, were you involved in the last master plan? Is there anybody that was on the council then?
Yes.
So, really, I guess I'm kind of looking for some feedback from the council in terms of what you envision, you know, for this comprehensive plan.
So, thank you. So, cool, this is awesome. I love this kind of stuff. Two quick thoughts, one on approach and one on content. I'm a big process guy. Again, we can learn from, like you said, leveraging the work that's already being done right here in our own community to see how we can extend that, and talking through the MML and some of the other communities that have taken some significant steps in how they do master planning process. One of our neighbors, Southfield, won some statewide awards and recognition for the way in which they engage the residents and the business community as part of their master planning process. It was a comprehensive, multi-factor engagement with, you know, face-to-face meetings, a very collaborative web presence, social media engagement, things like that, as part of the strategy of how to go about framing the discussion, receiving input, and making the content that much better. The residents were very engaged from the very beginning to the end. So, those are examples from a process perspective that we could certainly leverage and build upon and go for that next door. But as far as the, and then on the content-wise, I do think that looking at Berkeley as a comprehensive vision really makes sense to me. Certainly, I wouldn't, it'd be an ideal situation to have two separate documents that have to refer to one another, but rather a single compilation of statements and visions that comprehend the city, right? Because you're walking from one part to the next, that notion that folks don't necessarily know where the DDA is. We can fix that, but to some extent, I don't know if they need to get into that kind of detail anyway, right? Because they moved to Berkeley, they love it here, and wherever they go, they want to have that good overall plan. So, I think having it all together really makes sense and knowing you do the plan, have plans together, partner together, and learn from other communities that are in the shape.
Maybe that's going to be probably the most important part of the process. Back in 2007, there were a lot of meetings, yes, I mean, this would make us some public concessions and events in time. But the way in which we communicate with our residents is vastly different than it was back then. It's a whole different world in terms of the resources that we have to be able to communicate. There was pretty much a couple of meetings, and yeah, we had a few residents, but there wasn't a ton. And it was just primarily the planning commission discussing it, council discussing it, and then, you know, yeah, okay, let's move on with this. Now, I fully expect a significantly higher level of engagement, and I hope that we have a significantly higher level of engagement right now. So, reaching out to our neighbors and saying like, look, what are some of the things that you did, Southfield, you were awarded, you were recognized for the work that you did to engage businesses, residents, everybody in the process, that's what we need to do, that's what we need to leverage. Because, yeah, we look at, this is a master plan for the community, for the city. It's not our master plan, it's not just, you know, the seven of us, it's not just the planning commission, it has to be the community. And we need to get behind because this is our vision for the future. We talked about a vision statement, a mission statement, and living the plan today. Well, this is back in action. This is the practical application of what we want this to look like over the next ten to fifteen years and what we need to shift to. We cannot make that decision without having the appropriate feedback and engagement of our residents and of our businesses and the community. So, I would, from a process perspective, I see, you know, we've got the phases here, pre-planning, planning process, we have to heavily engage our residents throughout all of that part of the process. Because the other, if we don't, and then we end up passing a message from one of them that it does us zero good, it's a tremendous waste of time, tremendous waste of resources if we don't do it the right way. So, you know, we've seen in one of, some of the meetings that I've been with the DDA planning, especially the one this Tuesday, you know, we had fifty-some people there, but it was a very interactive engagement session. I mean, there were a lot of things to do, you're not just sitting there. There was no, you know, they've seen somebody talk, there's a lot of different ideas, and people were able to just on their own go up and say, oh, I like this, I want that, I want to see that in the future, or I don't like that, that's not something we want. And I'm sure we're going to get a lot of good feedback once we're able to really analyze all of that. To give the DDA a plan, then we need to do the same thing from a comprehensive standpoint for the city. What do we want our neighborhoods to look like, where do we want our business districts to look like, how do we want to interact with our residents? Those are the things that are going to be critical in this. So, if we're not engaging residents, we're not doing it the right way. Seriously engaging residents, not just saying, yeah, we've got a public input session, come here if you can make it this one night at this one time, and if not, sorry. So, oftentimes, I can't make it to that.
Ken? One thing I noticed that when we were talking, you said the steering committee made up, you say you can also find commission and DDA. I think we need residents on that steering committee also.
I don't know how you cannot.
Yeah, to make sure that they're looking out for the residents. So, maybe two residents, maybe, I don't know how many, but we need to get residents in the very beginning, in the planning process, not just what's in it, but planning how we're going to get this stuff.
Plan for the plan, yeah.
Yeah.
And again, there's communities that have chartered a course along that way that we can learn from as well, right? And try to get out.
Oh, yeah.
Talking to both the tree board and environmental committee, both groups have a strong interest in participating and having input, answering questions. So, anyways, we include them and maybe some other boards as well.
Oh, I would think all of ours would be.
Yeah.
I mean, we have a recreation master plan as well. Which is obviously, it's done every five years, but I think using that when you're doing the larger city master plan is important as well.
Yeah, and to kind of, actually, that was one of the points I was going to bring, to piggyback off that. I know we have our statutory requirements, certainly that process and what needs to be included and everything like that, but including all of these other types of planning and design guidelines, you know, master plan for the parks and rec, market studies, energy sustainability plan that we had talked about.
As we were writing, I was sort of sketching out, sort of graphically able to show in people's minds how everything gets pulled into the community master plan. So, use that to try to put the context together.
I think that's a real opportunity for kind of to move beyond those statutory requirements and talk about a lot of different facets that we want to highlight. Certainly, the public input portion, I mean, there are so many, Dan, you mentioned this, there are so many different avenues now since what we, since 2007. So, I think that certainly, I mean, something as simple as having a booth set up at some, at a lot of the events that we have throughout the city each year, I think that that's something you, a lot of foot traffic on, you know, something as simple as that, but I certainly goes well beyond that, there's websites, and, you know, I have a website about the master plan, you know, kind of step-by-step update process that we're going through there. And then I think the third point that I'd like to make is certainly it has the active engagement of council and the planning commission together. So, I think that, you know, what you're talking about, the steering committee, I think that's great. I think whether it be something as simple as, you know, planning commissioners and at city council have work assignments as a portion of this, you know, delegate some duties to be able to help kind of work through the... you know, delegate some duties to be able to help kind of work through this process. So it's exciting. I think it's a real oppo, it is a real opportunity, and I always say so, but, you know, a fun adventure.
Well, it is, and that's a good point. It is exciting. I mean, this, this is like the exciting stuff that we don't do a lot. You know, our meetings aren't always that exciting.
Right.
No offense. Well, we try. You said duty.
But, you know, historical committee has a master plan too, and it started on a floppy disk. It was saved in physical.
You're really working them all in.
I'm trying.
But it is.
If it's food, then I'll be better.
And, you know, really, it is an exciting project. And when we're talking about it and looking at it, if you're not engaged and energized and active to be able to undertake this, then that's a problem. Because we need to look at it as an exciting project because it really is.
This is a question of the scan, I guess. Is there any way in our televised meetings that we can have interactively with the public?
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's always that possibility. I think it comes down to feasibility. Which, yeah, but we have talked about that, yeah. And that's something that we'll probably talk about with, you know, CAC. You know, Delia's attended my meeting over the last week and everything. So, yeah, I mean, that is definitely an option, so.
You know, some of the items I think you want to consider with the master plan also is, you know, a few months ago, council adopted a complete streets ordinance. So I think now would be the time to include a section on, you know, a complete streets plan, you know, within, in your master plan. And one of the things that I saw from the '07 master plan that I liked, but I think we can build on is, you know, there's kind of a prioritizing efforts. You know, I think we need to have a well-defined, you know, prioritization of things over the next five years. But, you know, clearly marking out, you know, who's going to be responsible for it, the funding services, time.
I particularly like that last bullet point of the annual reporting so that, again, not just this, I like that for kind of a whole lot of our things so they just aren't self-exfection. I mean, if we're going to live twelve to eighteen months into a new master plan, you know, we don't want to sit on ourself and go, I'm done.
Yeah, no, and it should, it's a master plan. It should, from what we're doing at government, but it should be the guideline for what we're doing on a pretty consistent basis, from ordinances to everything that we do. I mean, it's referenced frequently at planning commission meetings, probably not referenced as much in our meetings. Sometimes we're doing different things, but it is the guideline. I mean, that's what we want to achieve and strive to achieve. And it's not going to be a book like the last one that, you know, when we got them, they were some digital ones that y'all have. But they look now, it's pretty easy to sell like that plan everywhere in the digital format. All right, any other DDA, city comprehensive master planning, we talked about those. Any other questions or comments before we move on to our next section? Our next section is the issue. Just to help. Now, that's kind of, all right, now everybody's done. Okay, we're on track, we're on schedule, we're doing well, we're a couple minutes ahead right now, which is good. We are going to break. We are scheduled to come back together at one o'clock. We went a couple minutes early because we have a few more minutes.
Yeah.
All right, so how about if we shoot for around 12:45, a half hour, is that good?
I don't think we have a speaker.
That's true.
But I think we could, if he's not here, we can move to the second part of that.
Well, one o'clock we got. So we're good to do that.
Yes.
At one?
I have a one fifty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, all right, we're good.
I'm free break.